I would like to make an announcement before the Friday of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, we have one correction, it's under new business, 3B, I had put in the wrong amount for the Hessen drain. It should have been $9,855. And our card will be $4,927.50.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of the motion.
I'll support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All in favor?
Dan's back on. He's back on.
What?
Dan's back on.
I know you've been on for a while.
Four, four ayes. Hi, Dan. Now he froze up again. We don't talk to you.
He was doing better by Joe, wasn't he?
No, it's not. All right. And it's hard to hear what. Did you hear Dan? Dan? Where's he going? Did you hear what?
I didn't hear.
Okay, are you moving maybe?
I didn't hear anything. I just came out for a statement that they were going to take from the right way.
Well, we've. Okay, well, we're in the meeting now. I've called a meeting to order. Okay? All right. Can you wait until comments and I'll let you do it at comments? Okay? Because that wasn't part of our meeting, Dan. We're in a meeting now. That wasn't part of our meeting, that was a discussion before the meeting. You can, but now I have called the meeting to order. I don't know what.
We're on the minutes.
Go ahead and say it.
I can't.
This is not the time for it. You can do it, Dan.
We're on the agenda, we're on the minutes.
Go ahead. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. Now we're at approving the agenda with money correction. And a motion has, the correction is under new business, changing the amount of 855 to 955. And also the part from 422, 427750 to 92750. There is a motion by Stevens, it's supported by Anderson. Did you hear that? Okay. So. Yes.
So did he vote on this?
No, no, no.
So it was three.
No.
He didn't vote.
No, he hasn't voted yet.
You already voted, so you're gonna vote again?
Yes. Yes, the three at the table and there's, and Ryan has heard you, right, Ryan? Ryan heard you.
It's not part of the.
It's not part of you.
Yes.
Joe heard you.
Yes, I heard you.
All right, we're having a vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dan?
I said aye.
Okay.
I want to say no.
Okay. Four ayes. Next on the agenda is approve minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, July 14, 2020.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the management of the flag for the 14th.
Supported. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes. Motion carries. I heard you, Dan. All right. Make sure. And it's ready to go. All right. Since Cullen's not here, I will read the financial last year. All right. Financial report for July, beginning balance was worth $460,931.29, receipts of $6,618.97, dispersments were $301,512.45, which gave us an ending balance of $226,037.81.
I made a motion to approve the financial report submitted.
Support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard you, Dan. You're welcome. Yes, we will. Motion carries. Okay. You're up.
Sounds good. Well, good evening. My name is Ryan King.
Yes.
We came out and did an audit of, what, about a month and a half, two months ago.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the township and the accommodations that we always receive here and even through the difficult times that we're in.
Yeah.
We appreciate you letting us come out. It's been a disruption for our schedule, just like it's been for everybody else. And we're grateful to be able to come out. You guys, like I said, you can do a good job of answering our questions and being available for our questions and so I suppose that's what we expect, but it's nice to receive what we expect.
Yeah.
So I'll start with that. And I'll also say, overall, the township is doing well. Yeah, it's making the big transition here and, you know, this transition that's happened has gone well from a financial standpoint or from the record-keeping standpoint. So I should say that as well. So you guys are doing a fine job. The sheet of paper that I gave you is a summary of the audit report. We've found over the years that if I go through the audit report, you're asleep by the time I get done. And so rather than bore you to death with that, I, we have condensed it. Plus, your audit report only has one year's worth of information, where what we've done here on our sheet, we've given you four years of information, so we can get a trend analysis of kind of where we've come from and where we're going. And so by no means am I trying to avoid the audit report. It sounds like you may have some questions with it, that's fine. When I get done, I'll answer any questions you have with the audit report itself. But if we look at that sheet that I gave you, it's overall fund rating, the top section is the general fund. And again, you've got four years of information. We'll start with the left side there. Your cash in the bank was 1.1 million. Your accounts receivable were 85,000. Mostly your property tax receivable and your state shared revenue, your bi-monthly check that comes in in April, we have to pull it back as income as of March 31st. The other current assets of 29,000 consists primarily of some prepaid insurance and some due from other funds. Again, you find the longer version, detailed version in the report. The current liabilities of 16,000, those are your accounts payable. Those would be the bills that you owed as of March 31st that had not been paid yet. So total fund balance then is 1.2 million. If you go across to the right side, you'll see that you started in 2017 at 723,000 and you've increased almost $500,000 over the last four years. Yeah, and for those of us that have been around for a while, if you go the four years prior to 2017, we went from about 1.2 million down to 700,000. That was kind of when the days when we were fighting the blight and we had lots of legal bills and, and so that somewhat has changed in the sense that we've been able to account for a greater fund balance increase. So that's good news because it wasn't that long ago we were out here kind of concerned about, you know, if we continue with that trend, what we're gonna have to do with the Casco Township financially. So 1.2 million, I'll come back to that as far as what a healthy balance is in a minute. If we go to the next section, your revenues, your property taxes for the year were 333,000. Your intergovernmental revenues, which is your state shared revenues, 367,000. Your licenses, permits and fees are 34,000. You had some charges for services of 1,600, interest of 10,000, fire runs of 6,000, rents and royalties, which is primarily your Comcast received, what we received from them, the royalties, that was 48,000, and then other revenue of 14,000. Total revenue that the township collected was 817,000. Again, you can see this compared to four years ago, it's gone up about $50,000. One thing I'll stop and say there, I do expect property taxes to continue to go up, but your state shared revenue probably are going to go down. You've been in communication with the state on that. I would guess at least 10%, maybe even up to 20%. So there's a, there's some big cuts coming with that to help balance the budgets, so you need to be aware of that. The next section's your general, your expenditures. The general government's 264,000. Public safety is 164,000. Public works, 196,000. And capital outlay was 12,000. That capital outlay was the LED streetlights you installed this year. So total expenditures were 636,000. So your revenue was 817, your expenditures were 636. So the change in fund balance was a positive 180,000. If you go all the way back to 2017, you'll see that you spent 900,000, but that was primarily the renovation or the extension of all.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on the general fund? MTA and the state of Michigan both would both say that a healthy fund balance is 25% of your current revenues. So if we looked at your current revenues of 817,000, that would be about $200,000. We would add to that your property taxes, because you collect your property taxes in the winter as of March 31st, you'd have to get all the way to rounds the next year for your taxes. So we would take 200,000 plus your 333,000, so 550,000 would be your baseline. We, we need to have that for a healthy fund balance. You're at 1.2 million, you're well above that. So we're, again, we go back to 2017, we're there 700,000 and trending downward, that's when we were concerned about where you at as a health of a township. Let's see if you have a question.
Yeah, your dad commented that there's a certain amount, we can't accumulate too much money, we have to, you know, return it to people. What percentage over the general fund would you say?
Would Joe say? Would what possibly?
Okay. Dan, I'm asking, okay, we, we're exceeding our fund balance, what percentage of that do we have to return to the people, I guess, in public works?
So, so you, so there is not a requirement to return it to the people. You could, you could accumulate a billion-dollar fund balance, there's no law against that. The concern is that with contracting budgets, especially if you go back 10 years ago, when we went through a different type of a crisis, a financial crisis, there was concern that the state of Michigan was gonna look at the local budgets and see that we have all this surplus money, that they would come back and take this money. So there was a concern there. There is not a law at this point that would require us to, if we exceed it by 100% or 200% or, you know, a dollar amount, at this point there is no such law on the books. It was more of a, it were concerned about this in the future being there. And I would say as a constituent, I'm not a constituent of Casco, but I'm a constituent of a township, and when I go to my meetings with my township, I would say, hey, look, guys, a healthy fund balance in this case is 550,000, double it. Now we're at million one, we know that that's a healthy fund balance, anything over that, what are you doing for me? I shouldn't be paying for this, and look, I'm a very fiscally responsible person, accountant, right? So I'm all for saving money, but if all we're doing is accumulating a large fund balance, are, are we in part doing a disservice to our citizens who are paying in? So whether it's removing the admin fee from our property taxes or doing more work with the roads, I know you've got a lot of work with your park, you know, all those, those are really your main things that we can do as a township board to, to work with. And there's other creative things, do we do recycle? Do we do, you know, you know, sometimes there's an annual township dump day, you know, just different things that we can do. Or it might be light removal, you know, whatever it might be, what are you doing for me as a citizen once we get over this threshold? And if it's, hey, we need a new hall, so we need to save up some money, I'm all for that. I mean, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Redo the inside of this, as you can see this.
And do the outside.
Right. My point is, once we get to a certain point, we need to be thinking, okay, why are we accumulating these funds? Do we have a purpose for them? And if we don't have a purpose for them, you know, we're over double a healthy fund balance, let's either put money into the roads or let's not collect an admin fee or some way that we can help the, the constituents. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, what did, all right, go ahead, Dan. Go.
In respect to Joe's that about returning the funds, and I know, I think that the funds are there for the township to try to provide, is, I don't know, are those to provide the richest spectrum of services that's based on all of the budgets that we have.
Right.
However, in this, in this situation, I think there was a, there were serious risks in the economy as well as then the impact revenues for the state of the state of California because of, because so many people are on a road, they're gonna keep.
Right.
Not being able to pay their taxes, so trying a little bit extra with, I think we're wondering a little bit for the next year, to, to this time, the risk is a good to do. I would like to, in my, basically, if we're like, if you look upon, we have funds there.
Right.
And to apply, but other bills that might do that value our services, and I think we're fortunate in place right now because for a while we were going down the tubes of supporting our navigation, and that's come along with the place.
Right. That's true.
That's my standard of thought.
Okay.
So I, I agree with Dan, I think he's on the same page of what I was just saying, that we need to be prudent, we need to be responsible with our finances, but at some point, we will accumulate, at this pace, I mean, you're accumulating, the last three years you've averaged about 175,000, more money coming in than what you're spending. And that's a significant increase to your fund balance every year. And let's say we do that for the next 10 years, that's almost $2 million more of a fund balance than what we have today. And so if that's the case, my question is, why? What are we accumulating that for? I'm not saying to change anything for today, but as a board, as the leaders of this township, you need to be thinking through, okay, what, what's a healthy fund balance? What's our safety, you know, department? We know we're gonna, maybe, we're certainly gonna decline our, our state shared revenue. Now, Dan mentioned the property taxes, if people don't pay their property taxes, you still get the delinquent taxes for the county. So you will get your money at this point through property taxes. Now, if, depending how far we go down this rabbit hole, and you know, we could see property taxes devalue if we go through an economic downturn, certainly. And if that's the case, we could see ourselves receiving less property taxes in the future than we have today. But at 175,000 average surplus, we have a lot of cushion that we already have built in. I go to a lot of these meetings, and I go to a lot of townships and cities, more cities and villages, they're dire straits, you know, really tough budgets. And, and it's nice to go, go a township that has 175,000, these are good problems for the township. You say, okay, do we have too much money? And I don't care if you punt, that's fine, you can hold off and wait, but I do think it's an important question to be asking yourself.
Well, for one, usually general law townships are better, I mean, tend to be, I mean, our budget commit, our commitments aren't as high as a village or city.
Absolutely. You're on the major old streets, you don't have water, sewer infrastructure, you don't have police and fire, the same, you know, that a city or village would. I agree with you 100%.
It doesn't surprise me, I mean, I didn't think that, but it doesn't surprise me when you said that Lansing was looking at people to take money from us.
Sure.
And what doesn't surprise me, keeping the politics out of both sides.
Yeah, it doesn't matter whether it's, you know, it doesn't matter. You know, it doesn't matter. You know, if, and government will be there to, you know, make sure that it protects itself and that, if that means that, you know, Casco Township has too much, you know, whatever they say it or you say it, right? Too much money, whatever that's defined as, you certainly can see a day where they, you know, restrict or, or require a certain amount of funds paid back to the state of Michigan.
I can remember our state revenue share was over three quarters of our income.
Yeah.
When they took away the state share, we had the constitution guarantee, now it's less than half.
That's right.
And I agree, and people, so we want to amend the constitution to take more away.
All right, Dan wanted to short comment. Go ahead, Dan.
Considering the, I, I believe we probably should think about planning how we use the unfortunate surplus of resources in the future. It's not answering that question to close the layer, because I think it's a legitimate question of whether we can continue with these funds serving this community. And if maybe I will ask, then better than we have a good answer, or good suggestions, I haven't, I haven't been asked about those funds, so it's good. Because I think that it's our, that's what we're looking to do.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the general fund? All right, the next section there is your park and rec, fund, your fund balance is 389,000. The, the revenues for the year from the county village is 18,000, which has been pretty consistent. You have interest or other revenue of 7,000. Total revenue then was $26,000 for the year. We spent 37, excuse me, $3,700 on general expenses and then we had capital outlay of 21,000. That's their master planning that we did for the park fund this last year, that 21,000. So our total expenses were 25,000, so we had a small surplus of $800 that we increased our fund balance. The liquor law enforcement is the next one. We have a balance of 10,000, we brought in $4,000 of state money or liquor fund money. We spent 2,600, so we had a surplus there of 1,400 that we added to the fund balance. That, that money, by the way, can only be, well, same thing for the parks.
Right.
That can only be spent on liquor enforcement or liquor control enforcement.
Right.
That's what I have, did you have some questions for me?
Yeah, I have the thing about, where it says.
What page, Joe?
Page 14. Um, did you, or somewhere you were talking about controls within the township, I guess I had questions on that, you said there's, were high risk for a lack of control or?
Yeah, segregation of duties, you mean in the report? That's something different than page 14.
Okay.
If you want to talk about that, we won't talk about that.
What page is it?
The very last page of your audit report. Okay. And this is a, a letter that we are supposed to give to the board, and we are supposed to give anything that comes up of significant deficiencies or material weakness. And the only thing that we have is segregation of duties. And I can tell you that every single audit, because of the definition of what that is, we have to put it in every single audit. And, and if you think about it, for you to get that off of your report, you'd probably have to hire six people. And so it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, the state understands that.
I kind of think that.
Yeah, and so if we could run down even just, you know, money coming in the mail, you know, the treasures department opening the mail and, and taking it to the bank and, you know, putting it into the reports and reporting on it, you have one person or, or two people that have control over one aspect of it. And for a proper segregation of duties, you might need three or four to handle all of those responsibilities.
Right.
So that's, that's what that is there for, it's, I would not worry about it, like I said, we do about 65 of these, every one of them has maybe except for one, you know, large enough to handle.
Oh, good job.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's really, that's a, that's a good job for the township, yeah, absolutely. So did you have a question on page 14?
No, it was lack of risk. I, I took it.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
I'll start, that's good.
All righty.
You guys all did a good, good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have to approve it?
Yes, I need to approve the audit.
I make a motion to approve the audit, audit is submitted.
Motion by Stevens. Supported by Anderson to approve our audit. All in favor?
I guess, just meant, hey, I guess I, you meant March 13th, March 1st. March 31st, 2020.
As of March 31st, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it wasn't March 31st.
All right. Yes, it was, I think that's a great idea. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I hear you, Dan. Motion carries.
Thanks, guys, you have a good night.
Good night, Brian.
Good night, you have a baltas thing.
Have a safe.
All right, we're good.
Take care.
Air hugs.
Air hugs. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of local ditching program on the, on the east side of Melton Road, starting at Sinclair Highway, going north approximately 1,250 feet. They'll replace, be replacing four culverts for $10,000. And we have that money in our drain, drain fund, and it doesn't cost us anything. The whole commission completely pays for that, so I need a motion to approve that.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the local ditching program, the east side of Melton Road, starting at Sinclair Highway and going north approximately 1,250 feet, replacing four culverts for a cost of $10,000.
The county pays for.
Supported by Dan.
And the county pays 100%.
100%.
Sounds great.
Dan supported that?
Dan supported, I heard him.
Yep.
All right, motion. All right, motion, Stevens, supported by, supported by Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard you, Dan. Four ayes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approved replacement of culvert on Lindsay Road, east of Melton Road in the Hudson Drain. Cost is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. We only have to pay half, which would be four thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Motion by Dan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Supported by Stevens. Oh, that should have been a roll call vote.
Well, this one is a roll call vote.
Oh, that, because we're not paying for that, all right. Supported by Stevens. Roll call, low girl. Sir?
Yes.
Anderson, yes? Yes. Dan? He said yeah. Dan said yeah. Okay. All right, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is water in the township hall. Me and Jennifer has talked about this when she came on, in on election day. Was a wonderful day.
It was a puddle.
There was a puddle, but our roof is not leaking.
It was.
So we think it was a fluke.
You can see the outline of it right here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not a leak in the roof. In the roof stand, we think it was a fluke when that bad storm came the night before the election. And we think that, that the rains were so going sideways that it somehow came through the side of the building or somehow.
Under the front windows or something.
It might have been a crack in the window or something.
I don't, I don't know, because the valve or the drop box?
Got wet.
It was soaked.
Yeah.
Everything in there was soaked.
So we think it's a fluke, we don't, because it's never happened before. Outward. So.
Orissa maybe it came through the siding somehow.
It maybe came through the siding, we don't know.
You can see the outline of it. It was, he thinks, because you, there's nothing, you can, you can see if it would have came on the side of there.
And it's not the roof, so at this point, I'm not real worried about it. We are going to be working on eventually replacing outside, redoing. I'm not going to do anything inside until I get outside done. So we, and I want, this year I want to maybe get the roof painted.
I know a good painter.
Do you?
Oh, yeah, just did my house, the guy.
Does he do metal roofs?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Give me, give me his name and card then, and we'll get some customers, okay?
He's phenomenal.
Sound good, Dan? Dan? Okay. Okay. So that's where we are on the, water on the floor. We think it was a fluke because it's never happened before, and we care rain, rain, rain.
Remember that they painted the soffits on the old, I was going to replace it all the way around, but that was really expensive, so they painted those up with the correct shape.
What, Dan? No, no. No, but not condensation, it was too big. Okay. All right. Onto payment of the bills. Any questions on them, guys?
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills instead.
Motion by Stevens.
I'll support.
Supported by Anderson to pay the bills.
Roll call?
Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes?
Anderson, yes? Patty?
Yes.
Dan?
Roll call vote on bills, Dan.
Yes, yes, please.
Yes. Motion carries. Simpson's comments? Anybody got anything?
Yeah, I have a couple things. First of all.
Dan has, I mean, Joe has some comments.
Um, the other day, I was, Rich.
Huh? Joe's, Joe's got some comments.
I was up.
Okay. Maybe take a minute, so.
I was up in Richmond the other day, and I ran into Tim Rex, the mayor of Richmond. I made the comment, lived around here all my life, except the years I was in the military. I've never been inside the fire hall in Richmond. Most kids in school go to field trip, and I've never, for some reason, I've listened.
You weren't there that day.
So but Tim invited us as a board one time to come up there to see the operations at the hall and take a tour. And so I'll, if you, if the board's interested, I'll get some dates and get it out to you.
Okay.
I think that'd be really fun. It'd be, it's good, because they're one, you know, they take two thirds of our township.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, the second thing, did you guys get the thing from Six Rivers News? It's really good, I mean, I'm very impressed. They talk about, they had a year, a ramp up from twenty nineteen, they talked about a park dedication. But I'm really impressed on the work they do. Matter of fact, they had a, there's a land conservancy that was in LePere County that joined in with them too, so their actually, their footprint is actually growing. And I did notice Michigan is a state that has the most land dedicate recreational space east of Mississippi.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Uh, Six Rivers is doing something in Baltimore too.
Yeah.
With the Six Rivers Conservancy sign on the highway.
Yeah, I think they're, the old Salt River Golf Course, I think they're developing that into a, like a major recreational space. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just kind of. Um, matter of fact, uh, you guys haven't seen this, Dan? Okay, here. Think of what that feels like.
Are you done, Karen?
Yeah.
Um, I gave you Jeff White's monthly report, this F Y I U. Also, we got a letter from Bill McMurty, McMurty, from Rockaway Township. Little surprise, please read his letter.
Yeah.
He has some concerns.
About the Tannerite.
About the Tannerite. Uh, and I think, wasn't, um, tell, tell, tell us about Tannerite?
Yeah. Yeah, a bunch of people who thinks.
That's funny, just blow this up and scare the heck out of people.
I would like to send them to a place like the Rock, where explosions were aimed at them.
Or, see how they'd like to be in Vietnam.
Right, exactly.
Patty, I think you had a copy of that, so it's.
Yes, he does. I gave them to you, they're on your table somewhere.
Yeah, it's a different feeling than email.
I put my, your table.
I got the PMS report. What, what's name it, Murty?
Bill McMurty. M C M U R T R I E, from Rockaway Township. I did give you a copy, it should be, if it's not there, I got an extra copy.
I love you, Jennifer.
Alan.
I got an extra, well, you're gonna get hers anyway.
And one last comment. Um, I want, my appreciation for the clerk's office and the job you did in this election. And I have full confidence in the general election that you and your team are going to do a good job. And you'll do, ensure fair elections here. And they're, you're replicated around the state, around the nation. Hardworking people, dedicated citizens, doing the job to ensure that election.
They do.
They did a good job.
Yes, they did. Tough day.
Yeah, it was. Okay, anything else, Dan, you have anything else?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay.
The World War III generation would have had those standards, they were all in the house, they were connected to the community fair.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
All right, I made a motion to adjourn.
I support. Joe just made the motion to adjourn and. Huh, yeah, they heard you. Yeah, about the children, yes, they all heard.
Seven, seven forty-five, I got.
Yeah. All right, we just made a motion to adjourn, and Joe made it, and Anderson supported it. And all in favor, say aye. Aye. Four ayes, motion carries.